Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. Tonight is a regular session of council. We have several ordinances that we need to read and pass. We will begin by establishing a quorum. We have all council members present, so we obviously have a quorum. We do have two sets of minutes that we need to accept. The minutes for the regular session held March 17th, 2014, and the minutes of the regular session held April 7th, 2014. Could I have a motion to accept those minutes, please?
Motion. I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of accepting these sets of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same session? Same whatever? We have accepted these minutes. We do have several communications. I have a couple of communications to begin with. This coming Thursday, May 1st, there will be a public hearing at the community center to solicit input on the formation of an electric aggregation council. This will be one of our first steps within the city of Athens to form our own electric aggregation group. Also, the first of two public hearings on the CDBG program. The first will be held next Monday, May 5th, at 7:00 PM in council chambers here. Then we will have our regular meeting after that. This is the CDBG program, has two public hearings. We'll have the first one next Monday. Do we have communications from other elected officials nearby?
Let's see. I think you're a week ahead, I think, aren't you? Are those my dates off at this point? No?
Regular session.
Regular session, okay. Couple things. One is spring cleanup is proceeding at this week, so for the rest of the week, you can put as many bags out as you want. That's, I've been announcing that for a couple of days, but a couple of weeks. Any larger items, you'd be paying by the cubic yard, I believe, although you can take it to the West State Street service garage, and we have roll-offs to throw things in if you want to transport yourself. I think this, what is it, the Thursday is the master plan for Arts Parks and Recreation is this Thursday coming up. Our little aggregation, as you mentioned, was May 1st. I also have an opening, I've been informed by planner Paul Logue, there's an opening, actually two openings on Environmental and Sustainability Commission. One is to be filled by a student. I think there's a recommendation that's in the works right now, but there's another vacancy. Essentially, this commission meets about once, once a month, first Tuesday every month, 5:15 at City Hall. Meeting lasts about 1.5 hours. If anybody's interested, you should, you know, you should be willing to work up to 10 hours per month for the efforts there. Contact Paul Logue, a city planner, if you want to get more information about that. Again, this is our Environment and Sustainability Commission, and so, yes.
I believe the city's street tour is this Saturday. Am I correct? Yes, 8:30 AM, we meet out front of the building there, and it's open to the public? Or no? Yes?
It is open to public.
Right.
Council members usually show up, roll onto the bus, and fit as many people as you can. And that's all I really have. I can't think of anything else offhand.
Mayor, I have a question about the city cleanup.
Yes.
And that is that I've had several individuals come forward and ask if some of the trimmings that were left behind this past winter with Aspen doing tree trimming, can that be brought out to the curb site as well?
I think if it falls outside the bag, it's going to be a yard waste and charged by that much. I mean, if you bundle it up, in theory, you're still paying the $150 on it. You could always call service garage and find out.
Thank you.
But as far as I know, that's, you're going to be charged with that. There's no difference on that. And we are having discussions with Aspen about leaving some of the debris around. They've been trimming lines. I know in the Oakmont area, actually, I've got some.
Auditor Hecht, do you have any communications?
Not at this time. Yes?
Thank you, President Sands. I was going to confirm with the mayor as well. I believe this Thursday, we also have a meeting for the Arts Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. Is that correct?
That's what I said, yes.
Okay.
So you confirmed that at 6:00 PM? Yes, I believe so, 6:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The other one is May 1st, which is the next weekend.
Following Thursday.
And again, that's for the electoral ag. And that's really to determine the governance of it. The concept there is we're going to put a council together to proceed to represent the parties, county and city, and start putting, at that point, once we get that, we get certified as an aggregator, and then at that point, put an RFP together. The RFP is actually being kind of built. We have several meetings going on just to see what kind of possibilities are out there. Any other questions?
I would just add to the street tour that if citizens are interested, that they phone Debbie Walker in the clerk's office, and so we make sure we have enough room on whatever vehicle will transport us around.
We only have really one bus that fits 15, max, maybe 20. And after that, just kind of everybody follows around with the car if they can.
If you're unable to attend, you could also let Debbie know if there's a particular issue that you would like some, you know, the city to be looking at.
Your favorite pothole, your favorite road.
Moving on, ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 1114, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Small Cities Allocation Program for calendar year 16, which is federal fiscal year 2014, and designating Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Programs, HAPCAP, as the CDBG Contract Administrator, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 1114.
Second.
And this particular ordinance authorizes the mayor, as is explained in the text, to enter into a contract for our Community Development Block Grant Program, which provides program project improvements around the city, and for which we'll be having the public hearing on Monday, May 5th, to solicit comments for some of the project ideas that we have coming up for us. And HAPCAP, the Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Program, will be the administering agency for this grant, as they are for some of our others.
All those in favor of accepting ordinance 1114 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 2014, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement with the Ohio Development Services Agency for a Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Critical Infrastructure Program for calendar year 2015, which is federal fiscal year 2014, and designating Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Programs, HAPCAP, as the CDBG Contract Administrator, again, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 2014.
Second.
This particular ordinance is for what's called the Critical Infrastructure Program, and I think this may be one of the first times the city has applied for this grant. Once again, it will be, if we are, would be successful with the application, Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Program would be the administering organization. This particular project has a grant ceiling limit of $300,000. And as I remember from our discussion in committee meetings several weeks ago, I think we were considering the Depot Lift Station that serves most of the west side and part of the south side, and the hospital is a possible project idea for the use of these funds.
All those in favor of adopting ordinance 2014 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 2114, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a partnership with the Athens County Commissioners and the city of Nelsonville for submission of applications to the Office of Community Development, Ohio Development Services Agency, ODSA, for the fiscal year 2014, Community Housing Improvement Program, CHIP, grant, and designating Hawking Athens Perry Community Action Programs, HAPCAP, as the CHIP Grant Contract Administrator, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 2114.
Second.
This particular agreement is also, I think, a first for us for this particular project monies. The state, as a new initiative, is encouraging the bundling of projects, so that we will be applying with the Athens County Commissioners and the city of Nelsonville. We have a deadline of June 6th on this particular grant application. A ceiling limit on the grant will be $400,000.
Again, the ceiling normally, if we did it alone, would be $350 for this next funding cycle. We're kind of shorting our funding cycle this past, we were involved in a two-year program, I believe, but we're shortening it just to get in sync with the other two entities, Nelsonville and the county. And again, the thrust there is the push there is to combine activities, so to speak, or at least coordinate the funding process.
All those in favor of adopting ordinance 2114 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 2414, an ordinance authorizing right-of-way acquisition, construction, and construction engineering of the West Union Street Project Number 280, authorizing an interfund transfer and declaring an emergency. Member Pappy?
Mr. President, I move to suspend 2414.
Second.
So we discussed this two times ago. I guess we did, yes, two readings ago. And this is the full, oh, why do I need to suspend it? We're moving forward with the, with the engineering plan and allowing the Surface Safety Director to sign in with that. Is that correct? I think I'm correct. So the plan is, as we reviewed, this is for appropriating the cost for the engineering.
Do we know who called?
I can rewind, everybody. So the total cost, we're actually moving, moving money from the sewer debt fund into the sewer fund, so from $758 to $750. That amount is $16,308. And we are appropriating, let's see, 900, is this the full amount? $973,538, correct?
Yep.
And then $91,365 from the street fund into TC 500, $204,865 from the water maintenance fund into the TC 500, $16,308 from the sewer maintenance fund into TC 500, $66,000 from the state highway fund into TC 500, $191,000 from wheel tax into TC 500, and $4,000 from the stormwater sewer fund, $755 in TC 500.
Point is, this is a very expensive project.
It is, and there's one other amount, $400,000, and two from the issue one fund. So it is. It is the full amount in the project for the right-of-way acquisition in the construction engineering and the transfer funds.
We have a request to suspend the rules, and I think I heard a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance 2414 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Again, member Pappy?
So, Mr. President, I move to adopt 2414.
All those in favor?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, if I may interrupt just for a quick second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Before we vote, I just, I just had a question for the mayor. I believe, Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, today, did you, did you meet with the President McDavis about?
Yeah.
A number of issues? Was this one of them that came up, or?
No, they're still discussing right-of-way issues on that. There's also been added IT issues. OU IT has been talking about trying to put some fiber optics in that location, so there's discussions going on. Other than that, I don't know what more to add on this. Again, still, the concept of a roundabout, I think, on Smith and Union is still up in the air, I think, at one point.
Okay.
Really, the reason why we're suspending rules and running forward on this is because we're trying to, again, some of the money won't be actually in play till July 1st, but we're trying to pre-buy some of the piping for both this and Richland at the same time, bundle it together, and purchase it as a bid package, the way I understand it. So the push on that is to get both these coordinated, partially also run some of the money from the debt, sewer debt fund, I believe. So that's in place as well. Again, that's all positioning so we can get the construction going as fast as possible and done as fast as possible.
And I do appreciate your update on that as well. I know that we have a pretty good recent track record with cooperating with the university working in collaboration with us on a number of these big projects, and I want to express just my support for this project, especially with some of the forward-thinking ideas that our Public Works Director has had in making this project possible. For instance, I support the idea of a small roundabout with this project. I'm encouraging the university, publicly, I'm encouraging the university as well, to work with us on this particular project, too.
Okay. But realize there are people out there that still avoid the roundabout we have right now, and the dialogue I hear is, now I won't be able to come through West Union instead of, you know, Richland. So there's always that issue of, you know, trying to avoid the difficult traffic pattern for some.
Take the bus.
Take the bus. We'll get to that later.
Again, the vote is for adoption of ordinance 2414. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 2414 is adopted. Move on to ordinance 2514, an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA federal local LET project agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, ODOT, for the rehabilitation of Richland Avenue between Canterbury Drive and Dairy Lane, Project 244, and declaring an emergency. Again, member Pappy?
Mr. President, I move to suspend 2514.
Second. We have a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2514. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules are suspended on this ordinance. Member Pappy?
Mr. President, I move to adopt 2514.
Second.
And I just would like to add that this, if I was unclear in my last explanation, this is the actual LPA federal local project for Richland Avenue. The last one was for Union. But because of the bundling efforts, we are trying to move all these ordinances along at the same time. And I would only add one other thing to member Butler's comments. If people are looking for other places to travel in this community, anybody coming towards the central city, we are a very pedestrian-friendly place, and if you're looking to reroute yourself, it's best not to come through the central part of the city, because there are a lot of pedestrians. And so as we move forward in these projects, we are going to be looking at some of the best practices for moving pedestrians, cars, and bicycles at the same time. So as we engineer these projects, we are looking to do those kinds of things. And they are city streets, and we hope to do the best we can with those city streets.
The rules are suspended on ordinance 2514. We do have a motion to adopt. And a second, all those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2514 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. This will allow us to begin the work on Richland Avenue that people have been wanting us to do for a while. Move on to ordinance 2614, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between State and Carpenter on Tuesday, July 8th, 2014, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM for Rally North America and the City of Athens, Ohio fundraiser. Member Pappy, please say. Ordinance 2714, an ordinance to ensure local match funds for the Mobility Manager Grant and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend ordinance 2714.
Second.
And the purpose being that we do have a grant deadline of May 1, in order to be able to apply for the renewal of the grant funds.
We have a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2714. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended on ordinance 2714. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2714.
Second.
And this particular grant for the Mobility Manager comes from federal funds through the Ohio Department of Transportation. And what it does is affords our community a manager, in a sense, for all of our transportation initiatives, which include the Athens Transit and the On-Demand Transit System. And I know we recently heard about a new potential project venture with the Job Access Reverse Commute.
That's further down in the ordinances.
Funds, yeah. So a very important position, because I think it's helped coordinate the transportation measures in our community and Athens City, of course, for what we're involved with, but beyond that, in the county.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
I will point out that we're just part of the match. I think it's a 15,000 match, Job and Family Services and the county, I believe, are involved in that. Again, we're not an island, and the need for a coordinated transportation system throughout the county, at least looking at the needs and how they can prevent redundancy, is really what is part of its job. So I think it's a good thing, we've done this in the past two years, I believe, if my memory is correct. I think we're getting a good value for it, because we find out what the needs are out there, whether it's the next ordinances that will be up there for the JAR or the On-Demand, which is going, you know, great guns at this point. But the overview, the strategic value of this is worthwhile.
We have suspended the rules on ordinance 2714, and we have a motion to accept the ordinance. All those in favor of accepting ordinance 2714 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 2914, an ordinance confirming the dedication of streets in the University Estates Ordinance 3014, an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Athens to execute an agreement with the Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing an electricity aggregation program pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 4928.20 and declaring an emergency. We'll move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 3214, an ordinance to provide a portion of the local match funds for the Job Access and Reverse Commute, JARK Bus Transportation Route Grant, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend 3214.
Second.
The reason for the suspension is there, again, this is a grant possibility, and that grant deadline is May 7th. We discussed this at committee last week, and as city council, we decided to take the lead in terms of obligating a sum of $20,000 to the Transportation Assistance Fund, required as a local match, required as our local match. This is the JARK Job Access Route Grant.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 3214. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules are suspended. Again, member Pappy?
Mr. President, I move to adopt 3214. Mayor, any updates?
No, I haven't heard. I assume that HAPCAP and Michael Lockman is out there shaking the bushes and making sure you get a commitment. But as I say, we're the first, we're the leaders in it, and again, if it doesn't get all pulled together, we'll know about it.
Right.
But as far as I know, there's probably commitments out there. Okay?
We had spoken with Job and Family Services, and the commissioners are being...
Lobbied, as we spoke.
Lobbied.
The rules have been suspended on this 3214.
I do have a quick question. Can you remind us again as to what the deadline of this particular?
May 7th, I said, is when the grant needs to be in by, but they'll want to have their answer sooner than that. But the grant deadline is May 7th.
For another two weeks to try and pull together matches for this particular grant.
Yes, originally, the proposal he put forward to us, what, two weeks ago, was that an informal letter of intent or wish to get into this grant was April 22nd. But then the conversation with him is that the deadline is the 7th, so we've got that little room in between.
Leadway.
Where he's formally going to say, you know, he's informally going to say, yes, we're interested, we want to get into the JARK program, and then he's going to have to come up with all the matches. If I remember, we're talking about $45,000, so we're putting in. But again, this is, this will go all the way to Chancy. Proposed route will be an extension, extension of our route, number five bus that takes us to the Plains, extended hours for that for the job and family, job, people get to from work for that, and then out to Chancy to cover the other Job and Family Services aspect of it. So we're hoping to get different stakeholders all the way on the route back and forth. Again, we probably, if you look at it, probably one of the deeper pockets, I always forget, we're the largest city in the county, so it's good that we start this up and prime the pump. And again, this is a pilot program, it doesn't, you know, if it falls apart, it falls apart. But I think it's, I think the time is appropriate to do this, you know, to extend our system out there, make use of the regional needs.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I think the concept is a good one. I think where it's going is prime, you know, because it will, you know, and by and large, go, a lot of the trafficking is going to be going past a lot of our healthcare facilities. But I do also want to say that this is one of those projects where it would have been nice to see some, some kind of metrics, at least to explore what ridership would look like. But again, I support this, this project and the endeavor.
Member Butler?
Thank you. I want to, thank you, member Pappy. I, too, want to echo my support for this particular ordinance, largely for a number of reasons. One, though, I believe, two, the deadline's coming up, and Michael Lockman contacted member Pappy and myself immediately upon hearing the information of the deadline and opportunity to jump on this. So I think he's doing his part to keep us informed and up to date. Additionally, he's been, within the position, he's been collecting data along the way and keeping us informed of ridership and the changes to the plan, overall growth of our efforts in the community to enhance transportation publicly. So these are just a number of reasons, again, why I support us moving forward with this and reaching out to the greater community. So, thank you. So, thank you.
And, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Mayor.
I'd like to point out, again, this is for accessibility of jobs. The idea there, if we extend the hours to make it work for people who have nine-to-five jobs, if we extend the location so people get in, because that's one of the, that's one of the weak links we have out there, is transportation for people to get to and from employment. You know, we talk about medical needs, we talk about service needs, but the fact is, this is the thrust of this type of grant. And, and I think that's all to, you know, all to the good to do that, to look and say, okay, what, what stops people from getting to work many times? It's a, it's reliable vehicle, especially out in the countryside. So that's what we're, we're trying to do here. What the numbers look like, well, depends. You know, if it's dependable, it works for these people, they're going to be on the bus. You know, I watch the uptick in the terms of buses. You go by a bus station these days, you see people standing there, you know? And so, you know, as we expand it and make it more useful to everybody, we're going to see more of that.
And I would just add that Michael did try to answer our questions when we asked him when he was here presenting, and he, he doesn't have hard numbers, because the route doesn't exist, but also with his coordination with the Director of Job and Family Services, who has a better idea of the job needs from the community into, I mean, the jobs are in Athens, so he has a better understanding of the numbers and, and what, what the impact might be, positive impact. So I, I certainly believe we're moving in the right direction. Thank you, Mr. President.
We, we have suspended the rules on this ordinance, and it is now up for approval. All those, all those voting for adoption of ordinance 3214 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Moving on to ordinance 3314, an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Union, Washington, and State Streets on Saturday, June 21st to 10:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 22nd, 2014, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival, introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We, what's the typo?
July.
Oh, it should say June.
It's a really long...
Yeah, what's, what's the deal with that?
We would be so well-known.
We do not need to suspend...
It numbe fest a shame.
This is a, I'm going to just talk all at one time, but there's a bundle of legislation here regarding Boogie on the Bricks, and so we don't have to discuss each one, but the bottom line is, all of you know that whenever we have a, an event on Court Street, we need to close the street for the staff to get in there and cordon off the streets, and then also afterwards for cleanup. So that's, so this year's Boogie on the Bricks will be Saturday, January 21st. June, I meant, what did I say?
You guys figure all the time.
June 21st, and then it will, we will reopen the street at 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, June 22nd. So that's for the closing, and then I'm just going to go ahead and mention the rest of them. And then, of course, we need to have the glass-free drinking container zone, so we need to do the ordinance for that. And then it's free city parking garage for those dates, for that date. And then also, we suspend the noise ordinance, because anyone knows who knows that's down there. It's, it's loud because of the, the bands. And then we also, so, okay, I talked about the noise. We suspend the vending, peddling, and soliciting so that the vendors can be within the, the area on the street.
Okay. This is first reading.
Right.
And I'll just go ahead really quickly and read the ordinances. Ordinance 3414, an ordinance, ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival on Saturday, June 21st to 1: 00 a.m. Sunday, June 22nd, 2014. Ordinance 3514, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title 7, Section 7.05.26b1, City Garage Metered Parking Rates and Regulations on Saturday, June 21st to 1:00 a.m. Sunday, June 22nd, 2014, for Boogie on the Bricks, a Family Music and Arts Festival. And what we're doing there, as Member Pappy said, we're giving free parking in the parking garage that day. Ordinance 3614, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting to allow vending in a designated area on June 21st and 22nd, 2014, during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival. And ordinance 3714, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on June 21st, 2014, for Boogie on the Bricks, a Family Music and Arts Festival. Okay. This brings us to ordinance 3814, an ordinance amending the 2014 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance is...
If we have suspension on this one?
Yes, we could, for purposes of spending out the grant. Yes, I do move to suspend ordinance 39, excuse me, 3814.
Second.
The purpose being that we do have grant funds needing to be expended.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 3814. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Nysley, again.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 3814.
Second.
And this particular amending of our appropriation ordinance is for purposes of spending down our community corrections grant fund. And there were some remaining funds in the personnel line, and they're not going to be used, but there are other needs for equipment, so the budget has changed within that grant. So this appropriation or amending of our appropriation ordinance will allow the spend down of the grant.
Auditor, have, do you have anything to add?
I think she did that pretty well, and it's, it's no new money, it's just moving money around in the funds.
As everybody knows, that this is, consider the council's lowest level of control by the auditors, that you have control over funds that are put in, in capital funds and personnel, and we can't move those in our office. Technically, I guess we could go into our system and move them, but legally, we can't do that without council approval.
Councilmember Nysley, you mentioned purchasing equipment. Did you, with these funds?
I did. Well, we're moving money out of the equipment line into...
Okay.
Supply lines.
Supply line to buy.
And then out of the personnel into the services line.
We have a motion to suspend, in a second, to suspend the rules on ordinance 3814. All those in favor of, of this suspending signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. I'm sorry, I got it behind myself. And we'll move on to ordinance 3914, an ordinance amending Section 2 of ordinance 1914, the Richland South Project, number 244, authorizing an interfund transfer and declaring an emergency. Also, member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend ordinance 3914.
Second.
And the purpose of this is to coordinate our purchase of materials for both the Union Street project and this particular one is for the Richland South Project.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 3914. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 3914.
Second.
This particular ordinance amends an earlier ordinance that we passed in the year, it was earlier this year, ordinance number 1914, and that authorized all the transfers would allow us to fund the Richland South Project. What we're amending on that tonight is that $90,000 of the dollars in that appropriation ordinance needed to come from the sewer debt fund and be transferred over. So that's what this particular ordinance does tonight, is corrects the funds to which it will be transferred to.
Okay. The rules have been suspended on ordinance 3914, so all those in favor of adoption of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 4014, an ordinance affirming the mayor's execution of agreement and addendums with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office for the period from December 31st, 2011, through December 31st, 2013. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance, and I do have one question, because I saw an earlier draft of the ordinance that referred from January 12, 2012, but it is corrected to 2011. So what this ordinance does is document the agreement, the working agreement that we have with the county commissioners for services of our Public Defender's Office.
I have a note that she's...
Oh, did it?
Yes, no?
What?
Do we need to suspend on this one?
Yeah. It's pretty retro, so I guess we should.
Yeah. Mr. President, I want to suspend ordinance 4014.
Second.
And the purpose being that we have the documentation, and this is for a prior period, so we do need to make sure that it's done in a, as timely as we can be at this point, to make sure our paperwork is in order for the agreement that exists with the county commissioners.
We have a motion to suspend, and, and a second of that. All those in favor of suspension of the rules on ordinance 4014 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules are suspended. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 4014.
Second.
I think we've talked about this ordinance enough. All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 4014 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. We'll move on to ordinance 4114, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an addendum agreement with the Board of Athens County Commissioners for the purpose of obtaining the services of the Public Defender's Office for the period from January 1st, 2014, through June 30th, 2014. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I respectfully request to suspend the rules on ordinance 4114.
You have a second?
Sure.
Here's, here's a second over here, okay.
I hate, you know, I have to, I realize all these suspensions are needed for certain things, but I do dislike suspending. So I'll second up.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 4114. All those in favor of the suspension signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, really opposed, signify by saying aye. Okay. The ordinance, the rules are suspended. Member Nysley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 4114.
Second.
And this, this next ordinance is also an agreement with the Athens County Commissioners for the purposes of obtaining the services for the public defender. This particular one is for the period beginning Jan, January 1 of this year, and we want to make sure that our paperwork is in place to document the, the working agreement.
I just don't know how these things got away from me. Again, it's a fiscal year situation, probably that's why I didn't pay attention. And again, probably what will happen is we'll, we'll try starting the other one in a timely manner, since you can tell, this one's almost expired as well. And again, this is for the public defender's cost that we assist for the county, and that's an agreement that's been going on for quite some time. Usually, in the past, when I was sitting in the audience and on council, we'd have a long discussion about how much it costs and whether it would be better to hire our own public defending attorney, and most of the time, we decide we do not, we would, it would be more expensive to do so, because we'd hire one attorney, and they wouldn't be able to cover the whole breadth of what's needed for a public defender. And as I say, I, I probably am the one who fell down on this, but again, it cycles around at a certain time that I don't usually think about renewing contracts at that point. We do pay it twice a year. I usually appropriate the money. I think it's coming out of the law director's office or court, I forget which. And again, it hasn't changed the numbers that much recently, which is probably why that discussion has not occurred. So as I say, I'm glad you guys are getting this done, so we can get it all straightened out. Thank you.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance 4114. All those in favor of adoption of this, of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, ordinance is adopted. We have just a couple, well, one announcement that I know of. We need a motion to accept the auditor's March 2014 financial reports. Could we have a motion to accept those?
So much.
And if one of those is a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of adopting the auditor's report for March 2014 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The auditor's report for March 2014 is adopted. Do we have any other announcements? Member Nysley?
Just to, to let the public know that the auditor and the mayor do meet almost on a weekly basis, on Wednesdays at 2:30, and the finance committee members, when, when they can, do join in on that conversation. So we just wanted to let the public know that that meeting is occurring.
And it is public?
It is public, yes.
Okay. Any other announcements? We had several announcements at the beginning of the meeting. Now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that were not covered on the agenda. Do we have anybody who wants to talk to us about anything that we hadn't already talked about?
Please.
I'm sorry. Okay, before we adjourn, do we have any committees that we know need to meet? Anybody?
Finance and personnel.
Finance and personnel, for sure. Probably more, but we have that on, on the, okay? So we are adjourned.